We have the agenda review session. We have ordinances on second reading. For one, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general notices of the City of New Brunswick, Title VIII, Health and Safety, Chapter 8.40, Solid Waste Collection and Disposal. Two, an ordinance to adopt an amendment to the redevelopment plan for the abandoned properties scattered sites in the City of New Brunswick. We have the ordinance on first reading, number one, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general notices of the City of New Brunswick, Title X, Vehicles and Traffic Stopping/Standing or Parking, Section 10.16.2.10, Schedule 38, Time Limit Parking Areas in Regard for Sedan Street. We have resolutions, number one, approve agenda amendments. Number two, approve payroll, 3219, 31519. Three, offer a refund to Redeem Tax Sale Certificate. Four, approve award contract with EWC Holding, Third Incorporated, doing business as Yvocoa Water Technologies LLC, for maintenance and support of a men for membrane filtration system for the water utility, 12-month period commencing March 28, 2019, ending March 27, 2020, specification number 741-19RFP, not to exceed $29,150 spare in open. Number five, approve request for use of city property requested by the New Brunswick Recreation Department, location Boyd Park and Amphitheater, Independence Day Celebration Wednesday, July 3, 2019, rain day is Sunday, July 7, 2019, 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., police extra duty. Number six, approve request for street closure requested by the Rockford Robert Wood Johnson Medical School, location Livingston Avenue between New and George Streets, 2019, Rockford Robert Wood Johnson Medical School convocation being held at the State Theater Monday, May 20, 2019, 7:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m., police extra duty. Number seven, approve request for street closure requested by Harvest Moon Cafe Brewery, co-sponsored with New Brunswick City Market, locations George Street between Albany Street and Church Street, for Spring Cast Fest, celebrating craft beers and promoting the downtown state center, Saturday, 20, 2019, 10:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., police extra duty. Eight, approve on-premise raffle, 50/50 of the higher recency, to Albany Street, New Brunswick, for Meals on Wheels engraved New Brunswick Incorporated, Thursday, May 16, 2019. Number nine, approve request for use of city property requested by Yoray Davis. Yoray's number Park Cultural Festival, Sunday, July 21, 2019, rain day is Sunday, July 28, 2019, also Sunday, September 15, 2019, rain day is Saturday, September 22, 2019, 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., police extra duty. Number 10 is held. Number 11, approve request for use of city property requested by the Great American Volleyball Location at Bugle Park, outfield area behind Fields 4 and 5, grass volleyball tournament, Saturday, June 1, 2019, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Sunday, June 2, 2019, from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Number 12, approve request for street closure requested by New Brunswick tomorrow, New Brunswick Community Food Alliance, Comstock Street between Livingston Avenue and Lee Avenue, community fair focused on food and food security issues, Saturday, March 30, 2019, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., police extra duty. Thirteen, approve request for use of city sidewalk requested by Rockford University Center, sidewalk from George Street Plaza, Douglas Student Center to College Avenue Student Center, for order walk to educate all about 653 million people worldwide who lack access to clean water, Saturday, May 4, 2019, rain day is Sunday, May 5, 2019, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Number 14, approve authorization to participate at the Borough Garden Park by Division of Recreation, firework display on Wednesday, July 3, 2019, in celebration of Independence Day, not to exceed $5,000. Number 15, approve request for street closure requested by Holy Family Parish, three events. One, Holy Family Parish Sacred Heart Church, St. Joseph's Church is Good Friday procession. Location Sacred Heart Church on Shu Bay Avenue to left on Townton Street, cross French Street to Harvey Street, stopping at Harvey Street Park, then to Somerset Street, St. Joseph's Church at the corner of Maple Street, Friday, April 19, 2019, 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., police extra duty. Number two, Sacred Heart Church Eastern Vigil, with prayers and candlelight, Shu Bay Avenue between Sedan Street and Townton Street, Saturday, April 20, 2019, 7:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m., police extra duty. And number three, St. Latteswell Church Eastern Procession, along Somerset Street, St. Joseph's Church, 15 Maple Street, Sunday, April 21, 2019, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., police extra duty. Number 16, approve award contract, furnish and deliver work uniforms for public works, water utility, public property, parks and shade tree, engineering, library, and police department, garage tenant, with specialty graphics LLC, 12-month period commencing March 21, 2019, and ending March 20, 2020, specification number 742-19P, not to exceed $56,470. Number 17, approve resolution to authorize refund of Estro for Volente Kimic, refund of police extra duty in amount $81. Number 18, approve award contract with Carver and Activated Corporation, furnish and deliver powdered activated carbon for both feed facilities, 12-month period commencing March 21, 2019, and ending March 20, 2020, revision specification number 106-2019WR, not to exceed $102,750. Number 19, approve award contract with Riden Supply Company, furnish and deliver repair plants and accessories for the water utility, a 12-month period commencing March 28, 2019, and ending March 27, 2020, specification number 738-19W, not to exceed $70,000. Number 20, approve amendment resolution ARD 101715, authorize amended memorandum of agreement between the City of New Brunswick and the Council of New Brunswick for water line relocation. 21, authorize payment of requisition number two for project cost, Cultural Center Project Theory component with Cultural Center Redevelopment Associates, Urban Renewal LLC, and care of the New Brunswick Development Corporation, not to exceed $1,761,314.40. 22, release of site performance guarantee in the amount of $94,386, and the balance of site inspection fees of $1,465.2 to 135 Somerset Street Urban Renewal LLC, 135 Somerset Street, block 49, blocks 6-8, 10, 25-27. 23, approve off-premise raffle merchandise at Boyd Park in New Jersey for the Peace Foundation, Sunday, September 22, 2019. 24, approve off-premise raffle merchandise at Pearl Night Club, 13 Patterson Street, New Brunswick, New Jersey for the Sprawl Nights Dressing Club, Friday, May 3, 2019. 25, approve emergency temporary appropriations for 2019. 26, been pulled. 27, authorize refund to Marilyn Leakey, in care of Leake House 2 LLC, the total amount of $7,592.17 against 342 Townton Street, block 164, lot 021, against order account, number 3-27-004720. 28, authorize tax collector transfer overpayment on several tax accounts. And number 29, there it goes. Okay, all the meetings are in order.
Councilmember Egan. Councilmember Escobar. Councilmember Fleming. Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig is absent. Council President Anderson.
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have complied with and satisfied with the annual notice to create sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick has been filed to City Clerk, taken place on the appropriate bulletin board in lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, had been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely The Hall News. Hurry, please stand. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain. A moment of silence for those men and women in our armed forces, in the United States around the world, fighting for our causes, and also all those who've come back disabled in some way, shape, or form. Thank you.
Chair, I'm taking motion to move events.
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Report of response by City Clerk.
Item one, a letter from Langin Engineering and Environmental Services regarding an initial receptor evaluation for 78 East End Ave. Item two, a letter from Kelso and Burgess in regards to recon services submitting its development application to the zoning board of adjustment for 48 Portland Street. Item three, a letter from Middlesex County Mosquito Extermination Commission regarding mosquito prevention and protection. Item four, a letter from Langin Engineering and Environmental Services regarding a response action outcome for the remediation of 9 Industrial Drive. Item five, a letter from Jim Pagano requesting a final inspection and release of a site performance bond for 50 Bartlett Street. Item six, a letter from the Township of Franklin regarding the amendment to Chapter 112, ordinance number 4267-19. Item seven, a letter from Rokes Associates, Inc. regarding a site remediation and waste management program. Item eight, a letter from the New Brunswick Apartments LLC and NBA New Brunswick LLC in regard to a high level. Item nine, a letter from G&amp;G Custom Builders LLC requesting a final inspection and release of a site performance bond for 316 Livingston Ave. Item 10, a response action outcome letter from Rokes Associates, Inc. regarding 760 Jersey Ave. Item 11, a notice of public hearings from PSMG on multiple days and times regarding the remediation adjustment charter. Item 12, a letter from Churchill enclosing a complete copy of the waterfront development individual permit application for the NJTA bridge structure. The correspondence will be forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We have a little public hearing. We have two ordinances on second reading. Number one, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general notices of the City of New Brunswick, Title VIII, Health and Safety, Chapter 8.40, Solid Waste Collection and Disposal. If anyone from the Republic, please come up to the microphone. You have up to five minutes, one time up, please, and please identify yourself to the record.
Good evening, Mr. President, Charles Pradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Just would like to hear from someone about what exactly is changing versus the current rules?
Well, a lot of it has to do with those things that are going to the plastic, but I think, Don is in the back there, but I think a lot of it, again, we want to make sure that these plastic, they don't put the things in plastic, they act without any net, does that messes it all up, but, Don, could you tell us that for a second?
Sure, we have to. So, the ordinance is primarily being updated to reflect our current policies and procedures that are pretty much already in place. For example, most of you know that everyone needs to wrap mattresses and box rooms in plastic, it's just putting that into the ordinance. Also, our electronic waste now includes the recycling of printers and fax machines, which I believe you know, because I think we dropped a few walk west, e-waste bag. Also, we are having some residents that are putting single-use plastic bags filled with garbage at the curb, those little teeny tiny grocery store bags, so we're putting in here that the bags need to be at least 13 gallons of capacity, which is like your regular standard kitchen bag size. We are also putting in place that property owners would be required to provide at least 20 gallons of capacity of a container for recycling for each residential unit. That doesn't mean that an occupant who is generating recyclables isn't also responsible to set their things out properly in a container, not in a bag. And then the newest part of it would be our recycle right program. So, the recycle right program is designed to help residents to come into compliance and recycle correctly. So, one of the big problems is not just here in the City of New Brunswick, it's actually throughout the United States that we're all having, is that a lot of people are putting their recyclables in bags, and those bags cause several collection issues. One is it slows up both our garbage men and our recycling men, because they have to stop to determine whether it's garbage or recycling. Then, once it's collected, sometimes the bags break on the way into the truck, that's one thing, but when they get to the processing facility, those plastic bags wrap around the sorting equipment, and the entire plant has to be shut down normally twice a day for an hour and a half or so, and then workers have to be sent up onto the equipment and machinery that they shouldn't have to be sent up to cut off all these bags, and then they have to be disposed of. So, this is our attempt to directly communicate with residents who might be putting their recyclables out in bags or have contamination in their containers, and by contamination I mean anything that's not an acceptable recyclable item. For example, if they're putting, you know, toys or hoses in there, different types of plastic that don't belong. And also, just to clarify, that we also don't want people putting those individual single-use grocery bags inside of the recyclables as well, so that kind of gives you an overview. So, you know, we do have an inspector going around on recycle days very early in the morning, I love him, and he is just, you know, leaving a sticker on the door of anyone's homes that has any issues, marking off what the problem is, we send a letter to the property owner letting them know as well, and then I mail the occupants some educational material about single-use recycling and using bins instead of bags, and we do that three times before it's turned over to our new enforcement.
Thank you for the thorough answers. Just a quick follow-up question would be the sticker and the notice to the occupants, is that in English and Spanish?
Yes.
Great. And I do want to thank TPW for accepting e-waste every second Saturday of the month at their place, so if there's TVs around or stuff like that, maybe just scoop them up and take them up there and make the city a cleaner place. That's all on this. Thank you.
Hi, yes, Daniel Moore through 33 Somerset Street. I will say thank you to the city for stepping up to try to make things go better, with helping clean New Brunswick due to where, basically, the things that need to be done, I just don't listen to speak about it, due to where it's not coming from littering, it's coming from the way people are loading their trash. Now, I do have a question far as the stickers, would you be able to tell me, what is it, three strikes and then you get a ticket? Three.
Yes. Yes, it's three strikes, basically, you get a warning, you get a letter, you get a warning, you get a warning, four times, then you start to get that. Don, you want to say anything?
Yeah, sure. I can just clarify, so, first three times, you'll get this yellow sticker on your door, so the first time you get the yellow sticker, we send a letter, send the education material, and we do still pick up your recycling. Second time, same thing. Third time, you get the yellow sticker, but instead you also get a red rejection sticker on the bag, and then the collection company is not picking up any of the bags or contaminated, you know, containers or recycling that have a red sticker on it. So, we're really trying to give the residents the opportunity to have the time to get a proper container and understand what, you know, what they need to do differently to recycle right.
Okay, thank you. And then last question is, what you just said today about the recycling, is a recycling company aware of your schedule? Okay, after you said with the tickets, do they know not to take the bags anymore?
Yes, they do, and the person who's fixing the stickers is also being careful to put them on the roadside of the bags so that the collector on the truck can see them easily. So, yeah, they're very well aware.
Okay, I thank you, and hopefully it will help clean up New Brunswick. Thank you.
Thank you. Of course, any neighbors who start to see that, tell your neighbors about it, just nicely. Block captains that are doing their thing, the community cleanup and everything like that, anybody and everybody will do a lot with the city, it'll be on the webpage and everything else like that, so, as much of education you can help us with, we'd appreciate it. Anyone else? Seeing none?
You are the second.
Councilmember Egan. Councilmember Escobar. Councilmember Fleming. Council President Anderson.
Yes. And one more, second reading, number two, an ordinance to adopt and amend to the redevelopment plan for the abandoned properties scattered sites in the City of New Brunswick. If anybody has anything to say, please come to the microphone.
Once again, Charles Pradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today, just wanted to ask what this means for those properties. Does that, for instance, mean that developers who want to build there are going to get incentives or advantages, will they be eligible for the, you know, longer tax exemptions because they're in a redevelopment plan?
That's all part of the process, Mr. Theresa.
Mr. Anderson, what this ordinance does is it takes the original list that had 10 properties on it and re-designates four of the properties that challenge being on the list, okay? Four of the, of the four that challenge being on the list, three won, no, I'm sorry, three lost in court, one won. So, the list is being amended from 10 to nine properties. That's what's happening with this ordinance.
Thank you. And so the three that are in bold would be the three.
That are being put back on the list.
Put back on the list. And would they then be eligible for those types of incentives, incentives like going for tax exemptions?
Some are down the road, but it's possible.
At some point, I don't know, with this particular ordinance, I don't, I can't answer the question.
Okay, I'm just curious what it means to be part of a scattered sites redevelopment plan, I've never experienced this before, is there anybody who could enlighten me a little bit, maybe?
Dan, the neighbors who probably answered that question, it's not here, but if you follow up with me tomorrow, I can get that information for you.
I'll reach out, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else seeing none?
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. We have an ordinance on first reading, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general notices of the City of New Brunswick, Title X, Vehicles and Traffic Stopping/Standing or Parking, Section 10.16.2.10, Schedule 38, Time Limit Parking Areas in Regard for Sedan Street.
Will the ordinance be sitting down Wednesday, April 6th, 30, and going to be advertised?
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. We now have resolutions 1 through 28, excluding number 10 and 26, any members in the public who is interested in thinking on the resolutions, once again, all the things are in place.
Good evening, once again, Charles Pradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Three in a row I'd like to ask about here on page five, one ending in 952, is, I guess, relocating a water line? Can maybe the water director enlighten us as to why that's happening and what that means?
Actually, this was a function of a project that New Brunswick undertook. We, New Brunswick and New York, New Brunswick co-owns a sanitary main that runs along the mile of one, Brook, and the function of 60-year-old pipes, so New York, New Brunswick had a section of that pipe replaced. And during the process, we discovered that we have a 20-inch water line which is in very close proximity to the sanitary main that they were replacing, so we had requested pricing from them, we issued change orders to the contractor, and they actually relocated the water line, and I guess this is the follow-up, the residual change rate.
Okay, the very next one is $1.76 million for the project right over there. I asked last week about how much this is going to be, I read an article and tapped into New Brunswick, said something like 17 million is going to be the total, this is the second requisition, is that correct? There's going to be, you know, an additional 15 million that the city's going to pour into this project?
I don't know what the total will be at this point, I don't have that information, but this is the second payment, and the second payment is $1,761,000.
It's not, not the last, no.
It's not, one more payment.
Oh, one more?
I believe it's one more payment.
Okay, thank you, that's all full. And then I want to ask about the very next one, the Somerset Street, I guess this is the project known as the Aspire, just want to find out what's prompting the release of the site performance guarantee?
Yeah, it's a, so it was a large project, and two or three years of work in construction, the final inspections have been completed, our punch lists were addressed, and all the work was completed, and this is just a request to have the bonds that we forced them to put up to guarantee the work to be done to be released.
So, the project's totally done, they finally did that long way to East End.
Correct, yes.
Right, so I'll just say that I wish that, you know, the parking authority had kept that lot there instead of turning it over to there, because what it is now is just basically a little cage that is not helping anybody, so that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the resolutions? Seeing none?
Who do you want to move?
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. I just have a discussion by the council, council members have anything?
Congratulations to the new chairman.
Thank you.
President, the answer is winning the master's talk.
I do have to do it, who is the chef there, so hopefully I'll be down or something.
Listen, you guys didn't get the memo.
Yeah, leftover from St. Patrick's.
I know.
Okay, we now have a public comment, once again, if you have anything to say, please jump to the microphone and then write it up. Up to five minutes, running time, one time up there, please.
Hi, yes, once again, Daniel Moore through 33 Somerset Street. I have to say, I thought I was going to be able to take a break from a while from the two meetings, due to us, I will say to Mr. Mollin and Mr. Patterson, I didn't forget about your retirement picture, just been a little busy, but my eye has been on Somerset Street and Alexandria, due to where normally I make sure you can see the pictures, but all you can see why it's so important with these streetlights, the road is so dark. Boy got hit by a car on the corner of Somerset and Alexandria Street, on the corner there, street light is out, I do have the call number, but this is the second person being hit at the same exact spot on that corner within two and a half months. I will say the city did do the crosswalks and all on that area, maybe I'm asking if the city can put two of their orange pieces there where no one parks too close to the crosswalk and put someone in a blind zone as they're coming from the corner, but, yeah, something is wrong, due to where, like I said, that is the second person to be hit at the same exact location within two and a half months, so I hope someone from the city can look into fixing the lights there, that's the number one thing about streetlights, where you surely do need them. Then also, I would like to say thank you for Mr. Charles's work with cold blue, due to where I did see that the city had, did raise it from 20 degrees to 25 degrees, great on that, for all the volunteers and workers who helped out with cold blue, Mr. Jones and the other workers, great job, hopefully, today is spring, we won't have any more cold blues, but thank you for your hard work and all the other workers. Then I have a question far as on Route 27 with the fire hydrant, I know that has been out of place for about two months now, would you be able to tell me if something will be done, due to where that's creating a major.
Where is it?
That right by White Castle on Route 27. I was told that some work was going to be done, but like I said, it's been almost two months now.
We've been locating several leaks along that stretch, originally we thought the fire hydrant was leaking, now we're thinking that the leak is further uphill, or further south on Route 27, so that that work is in progress.
Okay, thank you. And then one last question, due to where I know we've been getting a lot of rain, and it was on the news also last week, I'm not sure if it was Bugle Park, but yes, due to with all the rain, will the city be thinking about doing some type of spray this year for mosquitoes and ticks, due to where so much water is creating it?
Mr. Theresa.
The Middlesex County Mosquito Commission generally sprays for mosquitoes. I haven't received their schedule yet, but I usually receive it sometime in the spring.
They usually do it by airplane and helicopters, so we get a lot of spraying throughout New Brunswick for them, also I know of other different places, but the Middlesex County Mosquito Commission does do a lot of spraying.
So, is that the same company that been spraying for ticks, due to where that's what they were investigating last week on the news, Channel 7 Eyewitness News stating that due to where a lot of parks are holding too much water and it's going to be creating a lot of ticks, is that the same type of spray?
I don't know if it affects ticks, but I can contact the Mosquito Commission and see if they have any plans to spray for ticks also.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you. Yes.
What do you need, Mr. President? What do you have to say? Rex Salam, 96th Avenue, I just have a little question, a curious little question, I applied for the approval from the City Council to do my fourth consecutive year for the cleanup. We do have a cycle cleaner for the last three years, and this year, they told me that I don't need an approval from the City Council, but I would love to have that paper saying that we are a positive organization doing something great for the community, and I see that there is a cycle cleaner here from Doppers Unit 7, and I would like to see what they do, how do they do it, because we can provide some mid-insurance, signed signatures, or anything that it takes to get this resolution approved for the City Council.
Well, we don't approve any resolutions anymore for cleanups.
Okay.
Mr. Theresa.
It's not required, anyone has a right to clean up, a resolution is not required, as a matter of fact, we have a very comprehensive community program headed by Donna Caputo in the Clean Communities Division, and she issues, she works with groups like yours, and she issues safety vests, cleaning equipment, bags, instructions that adults can give to the children so that they can collect properly, and then this program is, you work with the city, and we provide you these things, and there's no council resolution required, you can, you can certainly choose not to work with the city, I don't see why you wouldn't want the safety vests and the, and the equipment for picking up the garbage and the safety instructions for your children, but that's your prerogative, if you choose to do it on your own, there's no resolution required, you can just do it, if you choose to work with the city, I, perhaps you can keep copies of the paperwork that you file with the city, therefore you have proof that you've done this work for the city, that's an option for you.
Just to recall, the reason I request those approvals for the last three years was because when the program started from Ms. Caputo about the block, the block captain for the cleanup, I submitted my application, and she called me and she told me that I couldn't do it, because I did have my own organization and that I should apply to the city council, and that's what I did, that's what I followed her direction three years ago, and for the last three years, I've been getting it with no, with no problems, you know, it's just name, resolution, and boom, we do it, I mean, and that's now, I would definitely take the advantage of taking the safety glove, the safety vest, whatever it takes to make this happen, you know, better, but the only reason I'm here is because I feel like kind of holding up, I said, what is the holding up, what is the excuse now, what is it that, I'm doing okay, number one, I covered the issue with the garbage, I spoke with Mr. Kevin Jones, and he told me probably because of the garbage issue, issues, you know, get Ms. Caputo picked the garbage up, I said, no, I do have my own dumpsters, I will recollect, I will pay for my own dumpsters, and yeah, okay, I covered that, then I covered the angle when Ms. Caputo said that, since I own the sacrilege and organization, I couldn't do it through myself through the city council, and that's what I did, now, she mentioned to me that I don't live here, and I don't work here, I live here, I have residence here, a few houses, I work here, so I cover every single angle that is holding me up to get this resolution and, and save, how come this, okay, so what is it that it takes? That's what I wanted to know.
The Unisell is taking care of the sidewalk, they're not necessarily cleaning up and everything, they're using the sidewalk table to march, and you need to have that permit kind of deal.
They're gonna have cables set up on the sidewalk.
Yeah, and you don't need a resolution, I mean, I go out and help clean up my block all the time, or whatever, but no one needs a resolution anymore.
If we do, if we do a sidewalk permit for gangs and violence in the city, do I, do I need a resolution for that?
I'm not sure I understand.
If I apply for a?
If there's any assembly, assembly kind of deal of people or whatever, then you need a permit for that.
Okay, I'll do that, I will submit it in the next three days, all right.
So, so you won't be cleaning the street to you to do?
I would do it without, without any, I mean, I don't need the permits, right, I just would do it, that's all I would do.
Yeah, do it, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you. Yeah?
Good evening, Thomas McCarty, sixteen Brookside Avenue, I had a question and a concern about, I guess these are newspaper boxes that are like all over my neighborhood, I took pictures of these just this evening, that's eleven of these from Robert Wood Johnson Hospital up to the border on Somerset Street where Somerset starts, I mean, this is something I've been meaning to come here for years, I've never have yet, there used to be more, they're usually empty of the newspaper, they're usually filled with garbage, they're usually graffiti, they're all in decrepit shape, people push them out in the street, my question is, what is the procedure and process for those to even be legal on the sidewalks, if that was ever done, and who monitors them, they're basically just, you know, litter on the, on the streets, and I don't see them in front of the Quincy or the Skyview or anything like that, so I'm wondering why they're allowed to be all over the street, that's literally eleven boxes in that one short block area on Somerset Street, and there used to be more, so, how, how do they get permission to put them there, did they get permission, and who is in charge of monitoring?
Having to, Mr. Reese?
My score.
I, I suspect that this is a First Amendment right, and that we probably can't prevent this type of thing, the boxes from, from appearing, that's been my, that's been my experience with these.
But I think, you know, we'll check it out even more, so whatever, but I know the courts are ruling, not that we like it, but they were ruling that they have, they had a stay kind of deal, but we'll certainly check into it a little bit more.
But I mean, like, you know, if they're broken down, falling down, there's nothing, you know, that's their right to put, use a grab on the street.
All of the things.
You say they have the ground? Sometimes, yeah, after doors, after.
The location, then we can remove the ones that are laying down on the ground.
I'll look into that, I'll see what we can do with the broken ones.
Miss Bradshaw?
They're, yeah, they're, they absolutely have the right to put them out there, there have been instances where the ones that have been really busted, really filled with litter, obviously abandoned, there have been instances in the past where we've communicated with the owners and asked them to either replace it with a fresh box and fresh newspapers, or remove it and relocate it somewhere else, so we ask them to keep them neat.
Mr. President, if you're willing, we'll look into this, and then we'll get back to you.
Thank you, and, yeah, because basically if you look at them, I mean, they've been out there for years, and they look like they've been out there for years, so I mean, those aren't the best pictures, but if you look at them up close, they're dirty, they're broken.
And someone who seems to be public rights wise will look at this and then head back to you.
And then another question I had is, recently, more than ever, which this is a constant thing, but I've been getting business cards, like, my driveway's about thirty feet long, I got people walking down my driveway shoving these in my sideboard, this particular one is a taxi service, like, who in the city is, you know, monitors things like this, I mean, this is obviously illegal, they're not a legal New Brunswick taxi service, they're walking down my property, sticking these things in every other day, I'm like, I have ten of them, you guys can keep them, they're, I mean.
Yeah, I have the exact same problem, I have brought it to the law department and Mr. Shami, I think because, one, the taxis are not from New Brunswick, so they really can't be picking up kind of deal here, but it's also, it's littering, but we also have some other problems with throwing the things, even, even those white bags, you know, at least those white bags, there's a number on the bottom that you can call, and they will stop delivering, but these things, they do it from the front porch, this is my house, they come down the driveway, they throw it to my side door, so I know that Mr. Shami was looking at it, I don't know.
The first windy day.
Yeah, they're all over.
But, I mean, again, like I said, that's, that's outright, you know, they're advertising a business they're not allowed to have in New Brunswick, and, like, is there anything that gets done about that, or?
Well, they technically could advertise, because then if you're out somewhere else, you would have those kind of deals, I'm sure that's what they say, and that's what the judges say in court, unfortunately, but we'll definitely look into them.
And then the, the last thing I just wanted to ask, like, within the last year and a half or so, the garbage in New Brunswick, like, I remember five, six years ago, I left on a Saturday to go away, so I put my garbage out that gets collected on Monday, and the following week, I got a summons, because I put it out a night early.
Well, I assume.
But, but what I'm saying is now, this is what I've been looking at since Monday, right next door to my house.
We, the?
No one seems to, to, you know, whoever the inspectors, I don't know, but I see it all through the town, and no one seems to address it, that, that particular house does this on a constant, weekly basis, they come out Monday after the garbage truck goes by, put it out there, and now it's out there till Thursday.
See addressed, sir.
That's fourteen Brookside.
That's right now.
That's there right now, or?
Obviously, the rule is that you can't put it out before five o'clock in the day.
But my, my question is, I see this now where I never used to see it, garbage is out there in between pickup days, and no one seems to be doing anything about it, because it just happens week in and week out, so is somebody slacking in that area, or just turning blind eye?
And finding a kind of deal, and working on the deal, or drafting, look at the inspector.
He can call me anytime and let me know if he sees something like that, I'll send somebody out, my sanitation inspector is out every day, every morning, driving around, he may not be on the street at that particular time, maybe across town, but we only had one.
Okay, but that was my question, because for real, I don't have that kind of desire and time to be calling all the time, and I know, you're, you're great, every time I talk to you.
Do you have, do you have a smartphone, by any chance?
Yeah.
There's an app called record it?
Okay.
Easy to download and everything, I've used it to around my neighborhood, and you just click it, and you can take a picture of it, show it, it'll go right to the inspections.
Okay, all right.
You want to do it today?
Yeah.
For today, sir.
Yeah, about something else, but yeah, all right, well, that is my only question, I just seem to notice it happening more than it never used to be like that, so, sure, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Evening, once again, Charles Bradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today, I did want to ask about the ordinance on first reading, where the changes to the parking on sedan?
Extension time.
For which area?
Plaza area, I'll look at it.
You'll notice that it says four hours of extension time, Phil Penn Crossing.
Okay, thanks, there was a, a large fire on George Street just the other day, I wanted to make sure that everybody's okay, I heard there might have been a minor injury to a firefighter, anybody enlightening us if anybody was injured?
Anybody? Hello?
At this time, nobody's reporting any injuries.
And cause, is there a cause yet?
Still under investigation.
Thank you. Okay, so, yes, I do want to, you know, talk a little bit about the Democratic Party, I'm a Democrat, I've been since, before any of, any of you have been on the council, and I?
And this is related to the city council?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you're all Democrats, right?
You're five minutes.
Okay, I'll be quick, and I have a?
An aide behind you.
An aide for, yeah, I don't want to, you know, waste anybody's time, but I do want to share this with you, so, of course, I, I brought up, I think it's important that we put a lot of thought into who the new freeholder is who's gonna replace Ms. Valenti, I know there was a convention held on March eleventh, and as a Democrat, I wanted to attend that convention, and so, here on page three of this document, you'll see this is the MCDO's Constitution, and it says, quote, "The convention shall be open to all registered Democrats of Middlesex County who wish to participate in the convention, I was denied access on the grounds that I'm a member of the press," and so, I just wanted to ask how you, as a Democrat, feel about that, and, and your colleagues?
Well, Middlesex County Democratic Organization has their process, and I have no problem with the, the process, and if they think you're a press, that's, I guess, good for you, I guess they, they think it's a real, real newspaper or something, I guess, so that's pretty good for you, but that's up to them, I mean, that's a county thing, we don't really have anything to do with that.
Any other council members wish to comment?
Do you have press credentials?
I do.
You gotta make a choice, Charlie.
Well, but, 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 but if you read the Constitution, it says, "The convention shall be open to all registered Democrats of Middlesex County," so, there's no exception written in here, that if we don't like your job?
With seating available.
That's not what it says!
And what about, what about conservative members of the press, is that, we're, I'm not having both of those, first of all, I know what you're asking us for, and what are we gonna do about it?
A elected Democrat?
Listen, if they have a rule that says you can't go if you're a member of the press, and that's the rule.
But, but they don't, not in here, they have a rule that's enshrined in their constitution, in your constitution, our constitution as Democrats, that says all registered Democrats are welcome to attend.
Thank you.
And that was advertised widely, and so I attended, and I was denied access, and I was notably, as far as I know, the only registered Democrat who wished to attend that was denied access, and, you know, it, it's, it's nice of you to spin it, that, you know, they're doing me a favor by referring to me as the press, but they do that to keep me out, and I'm beginning to think that you guys might not like me.
We like both of you.
No, and I, and I do appreciate that you, that you respect me as a journalist, and you do answer my questions, you?
Well, I don't know, I'll take your question.
Well, well, listen, you can't have it both ways, right, if, if you want to deny me access to your events because I'm a member of the press, you can't say I'm not a member of the press, I'm not a real journalist, right, or can you, can you play both ways, Democratic Party's gonna play both ways, when it's convenient for them, when they want to be anti-democratic and keep people out of their convention, this is an important decision being made, this is a super important decision being made behind closed doors, and you didn't want the press there, and you didn't, you didn't want to share what's going on in the party, I don't get it.
I don't make those rules.
Okay, well, I have one other handout for you, a few more questions, I'm gonna have to keep one for myself, it's two pages, this one, this is a press release issued today by the Middlesex County Crossfireers Office, it's about a New Brunswick school paraprofessional at New Brunswick Middle School who's been charged with sex crimes against a thirteen-year-old female, and I'll draw your attention to the sentence that I've highlighted here, quote, "New Brunswick school officials initially failed to notify law enforcement of the criminal activity as is required by the Uniform State Memorandum of Agreement between Education and Law Enforcement Officials, could you please ask the liaison to the Board of Education if you can comment on this and tell us which school officials failed to notify law enforcement of the criminal activity, and what's gonna be done?"
First of all, this is new, this is a fairly new allegation that just came out, so I'm not gonna talk about the specifics on this case, because I don't want to do anything to jeopardize the case, because everybody has a presumption of innocence until proven guilty, including people at the, because the allegation was thrown out against people within the school system, we still don't know what happened, this is fairly new, what I will say about this is, as a person who's been in education for close to a quarter century, whenever something like this comes out, it puts a stain on educators, and it puts a stain on everybody involved, as far as the victim is concerned, I believe that whenever you have cases of abuse, be it physical, domestic, mental, any type of abuse, I believe that anybody's a victim, they deserve to be heard, they deserve to be believed, as far as the perpetrator, they deserve, the perpetrator, if they are guilty, they should be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law, and we shouldn't have to point fingers and say who did this, who did that, there's procedures in every school, and I think that we should wait for the facts to come out, before we take one person's statement and turn it into a big political football, so we can play the blame game, there's a victim involved here, an alleged victim, I'll put a alleged victim involved here, there's a lot of people, and it's a big thing, and I don't take it lightly to say, okay, let me point the finger at this person, let me point that finger at that person, there's somebody that's hurting right now, his family's that's hurting right now, it is a big thing, and that's what, that's what we're taking on the making of it.
Thank you.
I'll just say I'm very concerned that, that whatever the school officials were, that they didn't bring this to the attention of law enforcement.
Find out, ask the case or something, to find out what the whole story is.
Sure, and, and I'll just close by and talk about Code Blue a little bit, I think it's great.
Quick, because we haven't been doing that.
Yep, sure, I'll be quick, Code Blue, great that they have changed the threshold from twenty degrees to twenty-five degrees, I appreciate Ms. Moore giving me a shout-out for pushing for that, but, you know, I, I'm not the one who made that happen necessarily, I did come here and speak about it several times, but I wasn't the only one, and I know that the administration worked to make that possible, but I do just want to say that, you know, there was Code Blue on February twenty-five, and February twenty-six, I did reach out and volunteer, offer to help, and I received a, on February twenty-seventh from Mr. Jones, he said that that wouldn't be possible, and that, you know, we'll have to figure out how to get you involved, quote, "There's a conflict, press is not allowed." And so, here we are, back at the same situation, now, this, in this case, I'm not gonna fight to get into Code Blue to help volunteer if my services are not requested or needed, that's fine, but I will say, just because on the record at the last meeting, I did offer to help, and Ms. Escobar said, yeah, come by at this time, I just want to be clear, that's not allowed, I'm being prevented from volunteering for Code Blue, and after the meeting, Keith told me that he would appreciate that, you know, my service could be writing an article about it, which I think is great, I'm happy to do that, and so I've extended some questions to Mr. Jones, and I hope that the, the mayor's office will allow Mr. Jones to respond to these questions, so that I can write an article, and maybe we can get back to the point where we respect each other, as me being a journalist, and you guys running the government here, and, and, you know, when we play games with, you know, we, we say you're a journalist, when we kick, we don't want to kick you out, but when, when, you know, when it comes to answering your questions, you're not a real journalist, that is played in both ways, it's a BS, and I, I'm not gonna stand for, we've got to find a way to work together, respect each other, so I hope we can, we can move forward, and have a great time.
I just want to say something real quick, I think you know that that was the, the case, and that's why I told you to volunteer, so I was enlightened that press is not allowed to that about that, but also, besides writing an article, I know that I was there when Keith also told me also to help out, see volunteers.